Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome everybody. This is our regularly scheduled city council work session for Monday, August 15th. It's really exciting seeing all the members of the public here. We're glad you guys are here to kind of participate and show support. I would like to remind you, though, that during our work session, we do not allow public comment, and we do not allow any kind of contentious arguments or anything like that. So while we appreciate we're here, you're not going to have an opportunity to speak, unless you're already scheduled to speak, just so you're aware of that. And we'll go ahead and get started off with our introduction of new city employees, our new old city employees.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce you to some of our new and new-ish employees. First is Ben Morris. He is our city attorney, and I think this is probably the third time we're introducing him, but it is the first time he's been able to attend onboarding. So, here you go.
Hello again. Most of you look very familiar. I'm Ben Morris, the new city attorney for the City of Montrose. Oh, I'm not holding it close enough. I previously worked here from 2003 through 2012. I was then fortunate enough to be your county judge for about a decade, and then the city was kind enough to have me back. So I've kind of made a round trip, and I'm coming back to where I started in the community. It's a pleasure to serve you in this capacity again, and thank you for having me.
Welcome back home.
Next is our deputy city manager, Ann Morgan Thaler is going to introduce her new employee.
Yeah. Hello. I am very happy to introduce Jace Hawke-Walt. Jace, stand up. Jace is our new planning manager, and this means that he supervises our planning and community engagement staff. Jace comes to us from the City of Grand Junction, and it took us a bit of time to fill this position in order to find someone with the right skills and really the right fit for our community and our team. And I'm so happy that Jace is here, and go ahead, Jace.
Well, thanks, Ann. Council, good morning. Yeah, it's, I know I met you all about two weeks ago on my first day, but again, kind of a pleasure to serve this community, really look forward to it, as Ann indicated. I was a senior planner for the City of Grand Junction for the last four and a half years or so, really enjoyed the community up there, but really enjoyed the western slope as a whole, and looking forward to really helping kind of guide planning for Montrose moving forward. So, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Next is Jim Scheid, who's going to introduce his new employee.
I got two of them. I'll start with Tim, our newest Parks employee, which Parks has been especially shorthanded recently, so we get a new Parks employee, we celebrate. And we are very happy that Tim is here with us, and I'll let him tell you more about himself.
Nice to meet everybody. I'm Tim Hanscom, Parks and Special Projects worker. I just moved back to Montrose. I left for a year back to Colorado Springs, which is where I grew up from a little kid up until about 2015, but it's gone for a year, realized city life ain't good for me anymore, so I came back over here where it's good, I like it. I'm glad to be working for the city, and I'm going to do my best to get everything caught up and looking good again.
Great job.
And then I have Zach also. He's our trash and recycle driver. He's been with us for a little while now, but hasn't been to a council meeting yet just because of how critical that job is, that once he started, we put him in a truck, and we haven't had room to have him out of that truck until now. So anyway, I'll let Zach tell you more.
Hello. I am Zach Johnson. I'm a local, born and raised here, just happy to be here and do my part.
Welcome onboard.
That's good. All right, and finally, Chief Hall to introduce his new employee.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to present Amy Wellington. Amy is our brand-new incident report processor, and I just met Amy the other day, and what's really great about her is she has a very positive attitude and a great smile. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm not going to get out of this chair because I won't get back in it, and I'll pass the mic to her.
Good morning. My name is Amy, and I grew up in Colorado my entire life. I grew up specifically in Aurora, and after I graduated there for high school, I came out here. My mom moved to Cedarage specifically, and did one year in Grand Junction, but then Colorado Springs had called me to come back. So I finished my schooling and got my bachelor's in criminal justice with the legal studies minor, and I'm back over here again, so I'm really excited to actually start, I would say, a big girl job for me, so. Thank you.
Well, we're very welcome and happy to have you here with us, too. We're very excited. When Chief gets that kind of look on his face, that's always a good thing.
I'll have another big girl job.
Yeah, you gotta be careful what you ask for. All right, well, now, that's all of our employees. We welcome you all to our city team, and we're glad to have you here, and we're really glad that you're driving a truck for us, and get back to work. Just joking. All right, next item is our discussion items. First is our MOU with the Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition, and this is being led by Jim Scheid, our works manager.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from discussing this since I represent the veterans group.
Thank you. And actually, we'd like to point out that Counselor Reed is going to recuse himself from this item and from the next item, so we'll see you in about a half an hour.
Well, I can stay here.
So I'll kind of explain the MOU and the project, but also, obviously, the veterans group is here today, and Mike Tricky would join me up here and help explain part of the veterans' portion of this project. So come on up, Mike. You can come on over here. Here we go. All right. Okay. All right. So this, we're proposing this MOU with the Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition, and it's to construct ultimately a memorial plaza in Cerise Park. And so there's a map included in the packet that shows the location, but it's right near the restroom that is in Cerise Park now, kind of between the restroom and the soccer fields. We've been working a little bit with the veterans group on location and ideas to get the project, at least in concept, to where it's at now, and that's the drawings you're looking at now, or just a conceptual level of where the project could be, what it could look like, but it's not nearly completed or ready for construction yet. But that's why it's coming to council at this point, is basically to allow that process to start. So we would be in this MOU allowing the use of the city property for this memorial in the location shown. We would be assuming the maintenance of this plaza long-term. If it were to be constructed, it would be city property and maintained by the city. And we would also assist throughout the design process and the construction process of this project to, one, make sure it's designed to our standards, and also constructed to those same standards. The veterans group part of this MOU would be responsible for generating those construction documents, so either hiring or working with a design team to generate those construction documents, planning out every kind of small part of it. This is a conceptual level, but there's a lot more detail that goes into the construction as far as utilities and the actual structural portions of the project. So completing construction documents would be one of the first steps, and then generating a cost estimate off of those construction documents. That allows them in their fundraising to kind of hone in on that final dollar amount that they would need to be able to construct it, because at this point, it is fairly difficult to say what the construction costs are without more detail in the construction documents, and also things are harder to estimate now. I'm afraid to put a number out there, just things are difficult to estimate. So getting to kind of step where we can actually have an estimate done on complete documents, that would really help to be able to say what the final dollar amount is needed here. And then they, at completion of the project, would dedicate the construction to the city. And that's, again, why we're coming here now, is to allow that process to start. So if this MOU is authorized, the veterans group could start with their fundraising as well as continue into the design process. They would likely put up a sign at the site that says "Future Home of the Memorial," and I'll let Mike talk more about that and kind of what their plans are moving forward, but that's what this MOU would establish, that we've all agreed that we're okay with moving forward with the project in concept, and then as we get further into completion of design documents, then funding becomes more in focus, so.
One question I have, are we looking, when we do the design on this, are we looking at any, what kind of coating we're going to have for the finish, as we did with the underpass on West Main?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So that'd be part of it. In concept, so far, it looks like there'll be a lot of block, CMU style, or even brick, and that would be coated with an anti-graffiti coating, which we use on the amphitheater, we use on the underpass. That would, again, would be part of why we're really involved in the design process, to make sure that that is included, because we've had good results with that anti-graffiti coating that we've used recently. It does work really well. It doesn't really take away from the aesthetics of the stone or the brick. It's a very good product, and we would definitely make sure that's included in the design. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mike Tricky and let him talk about the project and kind of their perspective and their plans moving forward.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all today on something that is very dear to me. This process started in, actually, August of 2019 during the pandemic. We were, the Warrior Resource Center, we were closed with the exception of appointment only. I received a call one day from Steve Woody, and he said, "Mike, I've got a book for you you guys gotta have down at your resource center." And the book is called Healing Wounds, and it is a story of a combat nurse, a Vietnam combat nurse, who came back and after a while realized there wasn't any type of recognition for the women veterans who served during that time. So she went on a 10-year odyssey to make sure that there was indeed recognition on the mall in Washington, and it did take her 10 years to go through all of the hoops and everything, and so that's there now, and the book is about that, and it actually gave me the inspiration to get this thing going. We needed some type of an area here in town for our veteran community to go to, and that would give them an opportunity for reflection, for healing, and camaraderie, and to have their own facility feel like, and what we've come up with is a two-pronged thing. We'll have that opportunity, but also an educational component, too, is a part of this program, this plan, so that people will continue to know and understand what it takes, the price of freedom, and we don't want to lose that. So that's going to be a strong piece of this as well. So interpretive signage would be throughout the park, or the plaza area, excuse me, and as far as any type of positive, anything positive as far as the city's concerned, it would just show the veterans, the veteran community, which is quite a few numbers anymore, that the City of Montrose is indeed aware of our veterans and what it takes, and what they've gone through and sacrificed, not only the veterans, but the veteran families as well, for our continued freedom. So it is something that is very important, I think, the City of Montrose needs to have and to show their support for the veterans. So that's how this project evolved, and so if we get this MOU approved, well, that just gets us further in place to get this thing going and really show that it is a viable project. And going forward, you'll see plenty of in-kind support from a lot of veterans that would be out there actually doing the project and like that, because they feel like it is their own and their own to take care of and to build. So please give it consideration. If you have any questions about it, please let me know. I'd be happy to come up with an answer, okay? Thank you. Thank you again very much.
And we recognize that right now, these conceptual drawings are not complete enough or detailed enough to be able to ask actual elaborate questions about. We've seen this before, and the design is pretty consistent with what we've seen before, and I personally salute all of our veterans, and I know our council also feels that same way, and we have a very strong feeling toward supporting our veterans in Montrose.
Are there any other questions? We'll be seeing this in two weeks? Yes, it'll come to a council in two weeks.
Very good. I'd like to thank you all for coming and showing your support today, and we're going to give you guys a couple minutes to go ahead and, if you want to leave, so you can, and if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our work session as well. It's not terribly exciting, but you're welcome.
Oh, I disagree.
Just wondering, we're asking questions. Don't raise your arm, you might be involved in something.
Yes, I will. Yes. Yes, the field, yep, correct. Yep, exactly, yep. It is not on the field area. Yeah, it's outside that. Yeah. Yep, no, they've been working closely with us and Dan in Parks to make sure the location works, make sure it's the right spot for it, and, yep.
Right. Exactly.
No, the restroom, I think, there is definitely potential to expand it in the future. We plan on making it bigger, I would think, but this isn't in the way of that. This actually complements it, I think, a lot, so.
I think so. I think this is a good location, given that you don't want to plant anything down.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't foresee that. Yep.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for showing up.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dave.
I was going to leave that model.
That's fine.
There's a meeting tonight, I don't know if anybody wants to look at it, or I can come and get it later or something.
Yeah, and actually, I can even let you know when we're done with this meeting. We have some council meeting that we have, will be in two weeks, so maybe that's a good time to bring it. I'm not sure what meeting is tonight, but anyway, you can leave it for now. I'm sure they'll want to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to have everybody look at it if they want to.
Yeah.
You want to just let me know?
Yep.
I think you have my phone number.
I do.
Yeah, Dan's got it for you, so.
Okay, all right, I'll talk to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and get back to our work session, and moving on to item B, the Council Chamber Dias Construction Contract Award Recommendation. Again, Public Works Manager, Jim Scheid.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, this is the project we discussed a couple weeks ago, kind of gave an update on the Council Chambers Dias Construction Project. Well, we're at that stage now, we have received a bid for the project, so this project started initially as a security assessment of this council chambers, and knowing that that likely came with an improvement to the dais, and that was kind of just the original direction, seems like well over a year ago that we originally discussed that. And so through the design process and meeting with council and with all the different departments that use this space, came to the conclusion that the dais and its location kind of contributed a little bit to some of the security concerns that were in this space. And as we looked at adjusting the position of the dais, it actually started to make the space much more aesthetically pleasing and kind of aligned better with the center arch here in the middle of the room. So, one, for security reasons, but also kind of came to light that there's a good way to improve the way the space looks and the way it feels as well. So that came with, again, relocating the dais and a different construction process for the dais, making it much more secure, and again, I don't know if Blaine has any input to that, but the police department was very involved in those design discussions and definitely contributed a lot to where the benefit of having certain access points and certain places for them to stage their staff, and this, the new construction would definitely feel much better as far as for the police department to be able to secure So in the packet, it's showing that layout of the dais and how that it would basically just shift from where it's at to the center of the room and be extended a little bit. This table we're sitting at would rotate to fit the space, offering a little more seating for people that present or staff that are at council meetings, and just kind of makes the layout a little more user-friendly. I did bring with me a sample of the carpet tile, so, or this is, it won't be tile like this, but this is, this would be throughout the entire building, this chamber and then also the first floor. So this would be the new carpet throughout the building.
Is that squeak proof?
No, it's not.
Is that the same that we have that we are installing in the pavilion?
It is, no, it's not the same exactly. This is a broadloom, which is meant for over a wood floor, and a little different look. It's not the same pattern, but similar in the type of carpet that it is, as far as meant for high-traffic public spaces. It's a very durable carpet, and modern look to it.
And will we be carpeting the entire chambers or just where it's currently carpeted?
Just where it's currently carpeted. So the wood floor remains, it'd just be re-carpeting this space, and so part of this project obviously starts off with the construction of the dais, but while we have the building shut down, we would be doing carpet and paint throughout the whole building, but only where it's carpeted now, so we're not adding any more, just re-carpeting current space. And so walls would be repainted, floors re-carpeted, first and second floor, dais moved, table moved, is all part of this project. And so we received only one bid from Stryker and Company, and the pricing that we received did come in aligned with what we had estimated, so we do feel like it's a fair price in that we were expecting a number almost exactly in this amount. So, and the only issue with Stryker's proposal was their timeline. So in the RFP, we suggested that we start in October and end in January. That was our ideal timeline. Stryker proposed that they start in January and they end in April, same timeline, but just shifted to start later, and that is purely because of their availability. It is not a material issue, it is just that in their own business, that is the time that they are available to perform the work, and they understood that that may take them out of the running for the project if we had received other bids that were on the original timeline, that may have eliminated them from the, from being considered, but that was really something they couldn't adjust. They have committed to other projects, and that's when they're available, and in this case, they were the only bid we received. Their pricing is in line with what we expected, so we're recommending that we move forward with Stryker and accepting their proposal of starting in January. It was a little bit of a delay, but it still works with, we're going to have to relocate each use of the space anyway, and actually gives us a little more time to do it. It's all doable, but actually having a few extra months to figure that out is actually a good thing, because it is actually quite complicated. It seems like the space would be easy to just move everywhere for three months, but it's not. It's, there are a lot of uses in here, and each one of those uses is very specific, so actually pushing that to January is a little bit more comfortable from my standpoint of just trying to organize everybody that utilizes the space. So in addition to this, this, what we're recommending today is just the Stryker contract. In addition to this, the only other cost that this project would have is the cost for the AV side, so there'll be a large monitor, there'll be monitors on the dais, and the installation of the AV equipment, and we, the owner hires directly an AV consultant for that, and so those costs would be in addition, but they're not part of Stryker's scope, that's why they weren't included in this. But that is one other cost that we're anticipating as part of this project.
So Stryker has a detailed scope of work that they have complied with, and they've given you and we have available at some point if we want to find out exactly what they're doing with everything.
Definitely, yeah. This project was more similar, is a kind of more traditional design bid build, where we had Blythe Group did our design, and they provided a spec book of sorts that specs out every last detail of the bid, and that is what Stryker provided. So they bid exactly the documents that were provided, and that included everything. Their bid was complete in that it included everything we asked for. And so this is, yeah, again, a little bit more of that traditional process, design, bid, build, hard bid, this is a lump-sum project, so.
Could you explain the owner's contingency?
Yeah, so that's for unknowns. That, we obviously designed to what we know, but there are, there very well could be something that comes up that, you know, as we're redoing carpet, there may be, I don't know, a piece of floor that needs replaced or something like that.
Is that possible that those contingencies could come back to the city?
Definitely, yeah.
Monitoring system?
Yeah, definitely. So the Stryker contract is in the amount of $237, does not include any contingency. So if we get through the project and we don't, we don't find any unforeseen's and we don't use any of that contingency, that is just unspent. So the $23,000 in contingency is not part of their contract, that'd be something we potentially could add if we find that we need to, but if there aren't any unforeseen's, then that doesn't get spent.
Okay. I'm just, the owner's contingency, I thought it made reference to the contracting company, but the owner's contingency is actually the City of Montrose.
That's right, yeah, it is our, it is an owner's contingency.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Scheid? Thanks.
Yep.
And I'm sure we'll be getting updates on this as it goes forward.
Yeah, definitely.
And we'll be seeing this in two weeks as well.
Yep.
And moving on to our next item is item C, the Amendment of the Community Development Block Grant Contract for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club, and this is community engagement specialist Ross Valdez.
I speak English, but I just realized that I'm going to have to recuse myself.
You could have stayed in bed!
I'm going to say the same thing.
That will be fine, thank you. And Bud, did you want to come on up?
Today, we're going to ask you to please consider an amendment to the contract between the City of Montrose and DOLA for their Community Development Block Grant, also commonly known as CDBG. This is led by Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club, and that's why we have Bud Taylor here, their ED, attending, so he can fill you in on all the fascinating details of the project. To give you a little bit of background, the city applied for, and was awarded, a Community Development Block Grant for the construction of a new Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club facility in Montrose, and due to the rising cost of construction, building a new facility has become financially unfeasible for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. In order to fulfill the objective of the grant, Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club would like to purchase the property at 1869 East Main Street, also known as San Juan Cinema, and renovate it for their intended use. To give you a little bit of background, CDBG, DOLA allocates funds to the city and contracts directly with the city, and so the agreement is between the city and DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, and that's why we need to submit a request to amend the contract. And this was after, you know, the direction given to us by DOLA after consulting with our regional manager. after consulting with our regional manager. This project has really evolved to a degree where we felt that it was appropriate to have City Council weigh in and have an understanding of what exactly we're asking in this request. And so as promised, I have Bud Taylor here today to give you a little bit more background on why the project is going from a new construction over to this renovated facility.
All right, thank you, Ross. Council, thank you for having me. First off, I just want to say it is sad to have the departure of Kendall, but Ross has definitely stepped up and represented everybody with the city very well. So yeah. So we are looking, you know, we were looking to build out on 6700 in Niagara. Our latest cost estimates were $7 million. That would include a $2.5 million loan from USDA. And that repayment schedule is about $10,000 a month. And Boys and Girls Club just can't, can't handle that kind of load. So we started looking in the city for what's already out there, what could we use. We located San Juan Cinema. And just so everybody knows, it's about 1.825 million is what it's being sold for. So it's about a quarter of the price, and it's twice the square footage that we would originally get. So that means we would get just more, more kids in the building. We have included the design documents into the, into your packet for you, for you all to review. So that includes a larger gymnasium, three classrooms, and retaining one of the theaters so the, the kids could just have something fun to do. With this, we're also, we're buying the entire building. So we have leases with the One Hour I-Doc and Park Avenue Parties. So when those leases and those tenants choose to leave, we will grow and expand into those spaces. But for right now, this is just kind of what we have planned. We're asking the city to amend the contract to allow for CDBG funds to be used for the purchase of the building instead of kind of the full project. As, as Jim mentioned, with the, the last project with Stryker, that's kind of the timeline we're looking at as well as January, maybe even into February, when construction can start for the renovation. But I think we just want to buy the building and just be done with, with DOLA. So yeah, that's, that's kind of what I have for you all right now. Do you have any questions for me?
So there are no limitations on the grant that prohibit this?
No.
And we've talked to our regional representative, and he thinks that this is just a formality to ask, or we may or may not get permission?
Yeah, so we've talked to our regional manager, and it's really a formality to get the letter from City Council that's requesting for us to amend the contract. But again, because the project has changed so much since what was originally signed, we want to make sure that City Council had an opportunity to review the request and then also vote on it tomorrow.
But, but it's pretty much a guarantee that DOLA will say yes?
The way that our, our conversation went with our regional manager is yes.
Okay.
It's a matter of just getting the sign on.
Okay.
From City Council.
Fantastic.
The, the existing property out there, will that be sold and the funding off of that be part of the process?
Yes, so that is the plan. Right now, we have with CDBG grants and the money in the bank, we have enough money to buy, buy the property as is. To renovate, we have a little bit of money left over, so we'll do that, and we'll get a loan. We don't know if and when we'll sell the land, but that is the plan for right now. And when we do, we're hoping that money will help on the, the larger side to help renovate that from the Park Avenue Parties into what we're considering our elementary-aged kind of Boys and Girls Club scene. So yes.
I'd like to just say that I like the idea of repurposing an existing building. It's been for sale for a while. And I know that having it there, the Boys and Girls Club, would actually be more centrally located for the kids in both sides of town.
Yes, that location is not by accident, by, by any means. You know, one of the things that we, we look at and work with is the school district. We look at their free and reduced lunch population as well. And the Johnson Elementary and the Northside Elementary have the highest rates of free and reduced lunch. So being within one of those two districts will allow us to provide food during the summertime to those kids that are at club, but also anybody else in the surrounding area that needs food. They just come by and pick it up. So that's, that's one small benefit to that area.
And one other benefit that I think is a definite benefit for parents is that there are also daycares across the street, next to Gold's Gym, and also right across Hillcrest. So that there are more options for parents to have to, not have to drive as much to deal with their children.
Yes.
I think it's a fantastic pivot, and I'm really excited for you guys.
Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions for Mr. Taylor or Ross?
If you have any other further questions, you can always email me. I'm happy to answer.
Very good.
Awesome, thank you.
Because of the urgency of getting this turned around, we will be seeing this item tomorrow night. So we look forward to having this discussion. And thank you for coming and explaining what's going on. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Now moving on to general city council discussion. Any items from council?
Sure, I'll kick it off with a huge thank you to all of the staff who were involved in making Funk Fest a fantastic event and the opportunity to walk around and talk to vendors and attendees. And it was great. And you guys just really did a fantastic job. Also, it's interesting to note, on my way here this morning, I did not go on Townsend. I went the backways all on New Roads, which are great. I saw so many city employees out working. I saw city trucks cleaning up limbs. I saw city workers staking stuff out. I saw city, I just, so, I don't know, it's a busy Monday morning. That's probably, you're laughing, that's mostly your crew, I would imagine. But what a busy morning out there and lots of city employees working.
Yeah, no, yeah, definitely every Monday, right, is a, is a busy Monday. But we have had several new hires come in recently and some seasonal employees come in that we haven't had for the last few months. So that may be some of what you're seeing, that we're getting a few more bodies in right now. And it's very helpful, very appreciated. And we're trying to stay caught up.
And you're still hiring, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Any members of the public looking for a job?
I brought applications with me.
It's so bad, he offered me a job.
I, I did.
And he's not kidding.
All right, any other city council comments?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with Mayor Protem Bynum that that was an amazing event. It was great fun. I think everybody that I talked to had a really, really wonderful time. There were no outrageous incidents. The only thing was that a little bit of rain kept people away, I think. But other than that, it was a fantastic event. And thank you to all of our staff for putting on such a wonderful event. And we look forward to next year being even bigger and better. Thank you. All right, any staff comments? Very good. Chief Hall has a building update for us on our public safety building.
So just with the public safety complex, you'll see that they've started paving today. So paving around the building, and then this week, you'll also see paving in the parking lot. England Fence has done an excellent job, in my opinion. You'll see the wrought iron fence coming up, yep, around.
I want to agree with you on that. That England Fence did an excellent job, and they were fast and efficient.
They are, yeah. They've got a good crew out there. And when they, when they got to it, that fence came up quickly. So inside the building, furniture is still being installed. If you have a chance to walk through it, or you would like, you know, just to come along with me sometime, you guys are always more than welcome, and we'll, we'll definitely walk through it. Furniture is going well. Other than that, interior-wise, I can't think of much else. AV is coming in. And we are scheduled for a grand opening on September 27th at noon. And we're working hard to get something out this week. Kind of a save-the-date flyer. So you all will receive that flyer, and then please share that with anyone that you so choose. So other than that, can't think of anything else.
We have a number of state dignitaries that are looking forward to coming and joining us for that event. So we're looking forward to hammering out the fine details of the timing of that for them. So thank you. Appreciate your hard work on that.
Awesome.
Any other staff comments?
Just a reminder that the ribbon cutting is tomorrow for Woodgate before the city council meeting at 5:00 PM. I think there might have been a typo somewhere about the date, but it is tomorrow, Tuesday, the 16th, at 5:00 PM at Woodgate.
And which end of Woodgate will that be on?
Scott has indicated that parking is available on the west side of Woodgate. So I think near the bank, so I'm guessing on the north side is where we'll do the ribbon cutting. That is, that is my guess, but I'll check in with him. He wasn't able to come today and send additional information.
I have a question. A lot of people have asked me what's going to be built there because it looks like they're grading it like they're about to start something. And my understanding was that they're grading it, and it looks nice, but they aren't about to start anything.
That's my understanding as well. The parcels that are adjacent to the Woodgate right-of-way are privately owned, and they're owned currently by one entity. And my understanding is that that entity is interested in selling in order for those parcels to be developed, but has not done so yet.
Okay.
So there will be eventually development on those parcels. And we haven't received any information about what that might be yet at the city.
And that is owned B2?
I'll double-check here. It's business.
Yeah, so it's business, highway or automobile traffic business?
Sorry, I can't remember if it's B2 or B3, but it will be commercial. So you'll see, like, retail, a restaurant could go there, businesses like that, consistent with the other businesses in the neighborhood.
Very good. Any other staff comments? If not, we are going to adjourn. But thank you everyone for coming, and appreciate you, all you members of the public coming out and hanging out with us. It was exciting, wasn't it? All right, we're, we're adjourned. Thank you.